Okay, the first thing on our agenda this evening is authorization to extend the contract auctions international. And with many thanks Jeremy, we have been successfully using auctions international since just get my grand total here. Since 2016, we have collected almost $100,000 from auctioned old or discarded vehicles that we have declared surplus. And that's just gone right back into the town town's revenue stream to enable us to buy more equipment. So it's been a wonderful source of income for us and we'd like to continue. We actually did not hold any auctions last year, but we currently have about eight vehicles that have been declared surplus. And we're ready to have them be auctioned off right after we reopen to the public. So we're very excited about it. So we're going to be doing that. Any customers on there? The next is, Mike is not with us. Okay, the recommission had recommended has recommended to the town board a fee structure for special events for our parks and town. This comes out of a number of bicycle tours that have been coming through town that we have been very welcoming to. They have basically represented to us that they would use our parks and just come through. It wouldn't be a big, you know, staff strain on us only to discover that we have several hundred bicyclists coming through town. It requires us to be maintaining a a police type presence to keep the cars and the bicycles separate. One in particular going through Getney Park to be able to clean garbage cans, having rec staff there as super in a supervisory capacity. So on the basis of that, the recommission actually took a look at our different venues and has come up with a fee schedule for special events throughout town to help us to free the costs, the real costs that we are incurring for these organizations coming through. We're not trying to be unwelcoming, but we are just trying to anticipate and defray the costs that we incur because of them. And so they are not for profit 501(c)(3) organizations, a $50 permit fee for either hamlet on Sundays only. And it has to do with the number of staff coming through, officers, park staff, recreation staff, depending upon what each organization would require and obviously depending upon the size of the event. For profit organizations, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say like, it wasn't at all clear to me when I was reading this that this was meant to to address the issue with the bike tours that have come through. And so when I was looking at this, I was thinking about, well, who does this apply to? So I, I think we need to be more clear about how this is going to be applied. You know, for example, when we look at not for profit 501(c)(3) and the use of the hamlet and staffing costs and all of this here, would this apply, for example, to the Chappaqua Children's Book Festival? Like, I guess I'm just trying to parse when does this?
No, because we're partners, we actually participate in that event.
I see. Okay. I guess I was just trying to think of what all of the potential implications of this might be.
My question related to that is what denotes a special event? Right? If someone rents out the, in Getney Park, rents out the gazebo, like what constitutes a special event?
Right, so they're renting out the gazebo, so there would be a certain amount of attendance based upon that rental and they pay us. With the, with the bike tours that come through, we have several hundred bicyclists that come through, stop either at.
I think we, Jill, I think we, I think we get that. It's not that we don't understand the bike tour application. It's that if we pass this fee structure, does it then relate to things like me renting out the gazebo for my kid's birthday party? Or, you know, somebody wanting to have a corporate party at the picnic pavilion at Getney or, you know, so it just, it wasn't clear based on what's written here, what this does and does not apply to. And so I think Jason's question of like, we need to, statement is basically like, we need to define what a special event is.
Okay, I think it had to do with depending upon the number of people coming through. And you'll, you'll see the numbers that Ike was talking about, like a park facility rental, like having 150 participants, if you're having a private party with 150 participants, you probably do have to pay for more than just the gazebo rental. Because you are monopolizing a large portion of the park.
But I've had kid, my, I've had my kid's birthday parties there and.
You have 150 people, you are such a brave.
No, 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 it's a $750 up to 150 participants.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay.
And I have gotten the permit and it's, you know, it's like $200 now, it's still not cheap now, but. But so that's, that's why I was trying to think of.
Okay, all right, um, this was not intended as a, as a resident event. Okay, let me go back to them and ask them to clarify, specify the events and maybe what we have to do is a, you know, a definition of event sort of thing, what it includes, what it doesn't include, and things like that.
And Jill, just to be clear, this came to us from the rec commissioner from Ike directly?
No, 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 so this came from, so the recommission has approved this. Okay, and in order to implement it, they need town board approval. The town board adopts their rules about it. So they've approved it, so what we're going to be asking for is clarification on a special event.
There are just things like art around town, wine around town, I mean, right? You know, there are things that we're just not thinking of that this could apply to, and then if there are.
Right, but those are town sponsored, those are town co-sponsored events.
Okay. So I'm asking for some clarity around what it means to be a special event and which locations are designated as areas that apply to a special event location as well.
What about something like the, what's that thing called, the thing in May, Lisa, that you always speak at the, the? Relay for life. Relay for life. Right, like, yeah, I don't know, just feels like there's probably a lot of events like that that are for a good cause, that's important to people.
So the recommission doesn't have jurisdiction over the schools, which is where Relay for Life is held. It was held, you know, down at Bell School and a little bit of an overflow there, but, but they don't have jurisdiction. So we're talking about parks for the most part. And town, when it has to do with requiring recreation staff to be present for some sort of rec event or, or athletic event that's taking place that isn't town sponsored in our town.
Yeah, I think the rationale makes perfect sense, the, it's really about the rules around it, that's all.
Yeah, about defining exactly what it is and just clarifying that a little bit, and I'm happy to do that. Lyle, do you know if, if I got a, an invite to this, this evening? Okay, we'll have to see, Ike was supposed to be joining us so he could clarify, but on the, on the face of it, it doesn't seem as clear as we'd like it to be, so we'll just ask for clarification. Okay, great, not a problem. Okay, I'm going to turn the next one over to Tom DePaul, our building inspector, and Drew is here as well for the proposed local law on the wall.
Good evening.
Hello, we can hear you.
We've put in front of the town a proposal to change the description of retaining a wall. We've had a lot of feedback from architects and residents and owners stating that they're objecting to having to go for a variance for these small sized walls that they're placing on their properties. And we're opting to try to give them a little leeway on this because some of these walls are necessary to retain septic system requirements and utility requirements to make traversing the property easier to get these services in. We put some verbiage in that would help ease some of the requirements and to accelerate their plans of being able to get this without having to go for the two or three month ordeal to get a variance, do this, and their septic systems are not getting any better or their electricity is failing quicker. So that's why we put this to the board for a work section.
And just to add, the proposed local law does not require walls to get variances. All walls still have to get building permits. The only other change we made was that smaller walls under two feet don't have to submit a professionally designed architectural plan. They can submit, and we listed, you know, what's actually required. If you're over 24 inches, you have to submit the engineer plan.
And Drew, this is something that's usually, pardon me, this is something that most municipalities have?
Um, we worked within the confines of what Newcastle's code currently says, so you won't find this exact language elsewhere. Bob and Tom really worked together to come up with the technical language. But this concept of walls not requiring variances is in other codes.
I'll leave it up to your experience, Tom, and Drew drafting it with him, but, you know, two foot wall, three foot wall, one and a half foot wall. I rely on your experience and knowledge to figure out what is needed and when.
A lot of this is based on the requirements of the building codes. The International Residential Code has a two foot, 24 inch wall height as being a critical height. Anything above that needing engineering and a closer look at by the town engineer and building departments. Anything below that is more of an ancillary wall and the threat of collapse is not that great. And even if it does, it's easy to repair.
Sounds like you have a rationale, I certainly run into the issues.
Okay, and so our next step is to set a public hearing for this?
Yes. And refer it.
And refer it to the planning board?
Yes.
Okay, that will go on our next meeting.
Thank you.
Wait, there's more. Let's go to the one that everybody's talking about, vehicle repair.
Okay, let me open with this. This all came about when we beautified the hamlet of Chappaqua and we had a service station in the center of it that was somewhat unsightly and unkept. It was not intended, I believe, at that time to encompass all the service stations in Newcastle. But I believe they got lumped into that as well and we're hearing some rebuttal from some of these stations saying that they're in industrial type areas and should not be held to this constraint, making it very costly and objectionable to them to have to conform if being able to conform at all. We might want to revision revise this and look at it to maybe to certain zoning districts, meaning the Chappaqua Hamlet in particular for the two fuel dispensing stations we have right there at the, at the moment. Giving them more defined.
So I'll, I'll say this, it makes me very uncomfortable that we are proposing a local law in order to, that, that covers only one business. I mean, if, we all know Alex, Alex came before the town board last year to talk about changes and upgrades he wanted to make to the Shell Station. You know, he's, he's not somebody we don't know and it, it feels awkward to me to be discussing a local law when we haven't reached out to him and had a conversation and seen whether we can just, you know, negotiate something with him and get him to come into voluntary compliance. I know that we did present some of these ideas to him when we, when we sat down with him to talk about the expansion of his station and his desire to purchase that property in order to do that. But it just feels to me like before we set a public hearing and before we continue to advance this local law, given that it is really specific to that one business, I would really like us to have that kind of direct conversation rather than, you know, do a carrot rather than a stick.
Were they, was he not amenable to, you know, making certain changes to make sure that the, you know, the outward appearance of the, of this station looked nice, like?
I think.
How this happened?
He was, he was initially within reason, but I think the plans changed ultimately in terms of what was being developed, so that changed. You know, it's an interesting balance, or interesting may not be the right word. He's been here a long time, he's a valuable, a part of a valuable business. At the same time, those cars there, make no mistake, are darn eyesore, they're disgusting. Too many of them and it just damages the look of downtown, especially after we spent all this money. But I do agree with Ivy, this should be more of a carrot that's figured out, you know, reasonable people can find reasonable solutions.
Alright, so we'll hold this.
I mean, yeah, and also I thought, I mean, I remember we talked about this a lot when we were, when we agreed to sell him that piece of property. Right, so this should not come as a surprise to him. I agree with Ivy, it shouldn't be for one business, but, I mean, we might wanna, there are a number of gas stations in hamlets, there are a few in Millwood, there's one, you know, the one up by, by like, across from the Chappaqua Fire Department, there's the mobile.
Oh, and the mobile.
Yeah, there, I mean, there are a few that it probably should apply to all of those. Not just the one, but we.
Oh, no, 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 it, it applies to all of the gas stations in the hamlet.
It's not that it wouldn't apply, it's just that there are no issues there, so.
Right.
Yeah, so it's, I guess I misspoke because I didn't mean it would only apply to one, one retailer, one, one merchant, but it. It's only, but that there's only one we're trying to get compliance from.
You're focusing on Alex.
But it shouldn't be, you know, he shouldn't hold this out that this is a surprise to him. We talked about this ad nauseam with him before we agreed to sell that property.
And right now, as drafted, it applies to all zoning districts, all gas station and vehicle repair facilities in all of Newcastle. So it is not limited at this time to any particular place or business.
Right, right, but we would actually want to change that because we are unintentionally including some businesses that are completely properly cited. Doers, for example, Garage, it's on Hunt's Place, it's exactly where it should be.
Sure, and that change, no, no problem to make going forward.
If we keep, we would want some modification on that.
Also, some of the components here don't make a lot of sense to me and since we're not going to go, you know, much further with this, you know, a roof structure not permitted within 50 feet of any public street or the boundary line, right? Therefore, the, the gas station in Millwood is probably pretty close, it may be within 50 feet of to have an overhang, so. I don't, and it looks great to me, you know, what they did when, you know, several years ago when they modified the station. So I don't quite understand all the, the rules that are in there anyway, but if we're gonna postpone, there's no reason to keep going.
I agree. We have a, we have a gentleman who's Donald Roan, who's raising his hand. Is it possible to connect him, Lyle?
Yes, Lyle stepped away for a second, but I can open up his line.
Thanks, Carrie.
Okay, Donald, we should be able to hear you, hang on one second.
Thanks for your patience.
Can I be heard?
Yes, you can.
Well, I own two properties that would be affected by, by this proposed law and under the circumstances of not having the ability to appear in person, I believe we should postpone this until we could get myself and others that are interested in this, an ability to speak.
Well, this is just a work session, so this is our first discussion with, with everybody and the proposed legislation, so this is not a public hearing. This is just us starting our conversation with the board and the public. So it's our intention to hear people's input and opinions on it so that we know how to, to craft, how, basically to do a better job crafting it.
Right, but I'd also like to be included when you have notices or send out a notice that is in. I only found about, out about this today and it's just too, it's just too short a notice or no notice we got.
What are the properties you own, if you don't mind me asking?
I own the car wash on the top of the hill, which is also a service station. And I own property on Hunt's Lane, which is a repair shop.
Okay. That's, so I think, Mr. Roan, in terms of where we are in the, in the process right now, as Jill has just described, this is not just the first time you're hearing about it. It's the first time that the town board is hearing about it and meeting to discuss this issue. And what we have now suggested is that rather than moving forward with a local law at this time, we are going to contact the owner of the Shell Station in downtown Chappaqua that we are trying to get compliance on this issue from. If we determine that a local law is necessary in order to compel compliance, we may change the zoning that this potential local law would apply to, which it sounds like would no longer affect the property that you have at Hunt's Lane, might still affect the property at the top of the hill, the car wash. But in any case, we're, we're several weeks away from that and we can get your contact information and we can make sure that if, if we do end up moving forward with a local law, that you get notified of our future conversations about it.
Well, thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Great. Thanks for joining us and thanks for your patience while we figured out how to connect you.
Thank you.
That worked pretty well. Okay, Tom, are you ready for the third?
Bring it on.
Everything you always want to know about Eves, but we're afraid to ask, go ahead.
Riveting stuff. We've had to battle this ancillary building component many times with a variance. Eves, commonly known as overhangs to most people on their homes, project past the wall line, protect, project past the foundation surface. Most and all surveys are taken from a foundation point. The Eves overhang this, so we have sent many applicants back for variances for a necessary part of a structure because it exceeded in the code 25% of the length of the wall that it was on. It was looked at and felt that this is a necessary part of the structure, should not be put into a viewpoint where if you had more than 25%, you needed to get a variance. It should be just automatically given as part of, as part of the structure, a required part of the structure. And it's not implicated on a survey at this point anyway. So it's just putting a burden on, again, an owner, an applicant, contractor to have to wait another two or three months to do their project, spend an exorbitant amount of money and time pleading their case for something that by right should be there anyway. Simply taking out the word Eve out of the context of projections will make this a lot simpler and give the applicants an easier way to get their building permit.
And a question for you, Tom, so there's no safety risk of the, of the Eve being more than 25% of the, you know, covering more than 25% of the wall?
No, the building right behind you, the whole length of the building has an Eve that sticks out probably about 12 inches where it holds the gutter. You know, we're limiting them to a three foot maximum distance away from the building and that's by architectural strength. So they're, they're restricted by that, so that's like a safety check at that point. But this is something that's really necessary because it helps in twofold. It pushes the drip line away from the house so that the foundations don't take on excessive water to create mold situations. And it creates a shadow line for the sun, so we don't need to use as much air conditioning in the summertime or as much heat in the wintertime. So it does help in many ways.
Great, thank you, I appreciate that.
Drew, do you want to chime in on this with any legalese?
No, there's really not much, this has been in the works for a long time. We've kind of pushed it off thinking we'll just wait till we have a whole bunch of things to, that we want to change from six dash four twenty, but we pushed it off and pushed it off and it's just such a simple change. We thought, why not just move forward with it and, you know, do what we have to do. So it's very simple, we just took out the word Eves. And now all we, it does have to be referred to the planning board because it is a change to the zoning code, but other than that, it's a pretty straightforward local law.
Thank you, very beneficial.
So this is referral as well, okay, great. Okay. The next thing we've got on the agenda is payment of claims. I did note Jason's comment. So Jason had a comment about the fact that it's sort of hard for the board to discern by looking at the payment of claims. What if any of the expenditures would have been subject to additional town board approval based upon the, you know, the protocols that we've self-imposed in light of the state of emergency and things like that? So there would be any of the expenditures that are over $3,000 between three and $10,000 because of the way our policy, the way our protocols currently work, even before COVID-19, those always needed town board approval. So Rob, do you want to go through them a little bit? I mean, certainly over $3,000, I did note that there were some, the significant payment on this was actually payments to ELQ for change orders that are contractual obligations that we have, that we had to make.
Ovac was on there. A lot of regular bills were on there. The one thing I would say, it would be very difficult to, to categorize very many of these expenditures because if you, look, we enacted that, what, about three weeks ago or two weeks ago? So anything we're paying right now, we really haven't received an invoice for anything that would qualify under that, I would guess. I mean, we're seeing the purchase orders come in. We did a purchase order today for that piece of equipment that, that DPW wants to use for road paving. Other than that, we haven't really done many requisitions or purchase orders in the last couple of weeks, so. I can't note a lot of expenditures, probably wouldn't see many of them on this check run.
Is there a way that we could just flag them going forward so the board is aware of them? I mean, I guess the board would be, board would recognize them because we would, they would have had to approve them. But I don't know, Jason, what, I mean, what, what would you like to see?
That's a, that's a great question. The question becomes if any of them, if things are contractually obligated for us to pay because we've received equipment, we've received services, less concerned about that. You know, it's just hard to know whether there are things that we could delay that might have been approved in the past that, that we should, that we should reconsider. And I don't know, I don't know the right answer because otherwise there's pretty much nothing that, right from the, you know, the, the plan that we put in two weeks ago, for $3,000 and above, had some degree of board approval, there's nothing that's going to meet that criteria period, so then it becomes the, you know, not worth, not worth the, you know, having that review at all, because.
Well, I think what's happening, I'm sorry, I, I think what's happening is, is that discretionary purchases are just not being made. So I don't think it's a matter of that we're holding invoices, I think it's a matter of the purchases themselves. If, you know, we're just not making them.
Got it.
No, we, we have minimal staff in any way, so whatever it is that we're, that we're purchasing now, I can give you an example there, I know that DPW has been looking to purchase a disinfecting machine for like a COVID-19 disinfecting, Millwood Fire Department, oh.
Same one that the last thing had.
Right, and so we've been looking at that, everything like that is on backorder. So we, you know, if we could have it, it would be great, it would mean that we wouldn't have to necessarily in every instance bring in a separate COVID-19 cleaner if the situation. bring in a separate COVID-19 cleaner if the situation presented itself. I think it was either OVAC or Millwood that was was helped us out over the past weekend disinfecting some of our police cars. So things like that. But if we could grab, if we could purchase that, we certainly would. But with other things, um only necessities are really being purchased at this point. And if there is, you know, an opportunity for us to to put a purchase, we basically have. We don't have the staff to be making them.
I would say too, what you're seeing now is the is us paying for it. It's been approved. We have the item. So um kind of like the the cat's out of the bag at this point. The due diligence had to take place long before this. And and that took place at a department head. It took place with my accounts payable person and or myself and Jill. So um I mean.
Makes sense. I guess the question is really for the the town board. We put in this uh this this rule that we'd look at purchases over $3,000. But there aren't going to be any, so I'm not sure if, you know, if I'm missing something.
Well, I think the fact that you put in the protocol has given everybody pause to stop and say, wait, if it's $3,000, the board needs to look at it. Do we really need it right now? And if you're not seeing it, it's because they've decided that they can wait on it, or it doesn't need to be purchased this year at all.
All right, that that was that was great. I appreciate that, Jill.
And I I think if we wanted to track this, I mean, Jill, when we could track this manually on a on a spreadsheet, um when you or I are approving an expenditure over the $3,000 and you know, we certainly could do that and and I don't know, uh every meeting or every other meeting provide that.
Yeah, I'm just I'm not looking for any undue burden either.
No, 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 no. It there there aren't that many significant bills. I mean, certainly the change order to ELQ for work that was done in June of last year was significant. But also we have reviewed it and edited it down and, you know, taken a significant percentage of it off and but clearly the work was done, so.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Anything else for work session? Okay, then I guess we're going to take a a motion to come out of a work session and move into our town board meeting.
Hello.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi. Hi.
All right.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Uh good evening and welcome to the town board meeting for April 14th, 2020. I have some uh legal announcements that I need to make at the top of the meeting. So I've confirmed with the towns council that tonight's meeting has been convened in accordance with the governor's March 13th, 2020 executive order 202 dot one, which suspends certain provisions of the open meetings law to allow municipal board to convene a meeting via video conferencing. In accordance with the executive order, the public has been provided with the ability to view tonight's work session, and a transcript will be provided at a later date. Uh I am now going to do a roll call of the board members to assure that there is a quorum present for this meeting. Uh we'll start with deputy town supervisor Jeremy Soland.
Here.
Council member Lisa Katz.
Here.
Council member Lauren Levin.
Here.
And council member Jason Lichtenfall.
Here.
I have also confirmed with the town clerk that this meeting has been duly noticed. We have fulfilled our legal notice requirements by posting notice on the town bulletin boards, faxing to the library and news organizations, and posting notice on the town's homepage of its website, and listing on the town's Facebook page. A link has also been provided to the public so that you can view this meeting, and I'm advised that the link is active. Carrie or Lyle, give us a thumbs up on that.
You're all set.
Okay, and is working. And furthermore, a video of this meeting will be made available to the public for public access TV and on the town's website. So thank you all for joining us. And I will, uh now that I've called the meeting to order, I will give you my town supervisors' report. Um so starting at the top with the latest news with regard to the COVID-19 pandemic. Um as of today, there are 20,191 residents in Westchester County who have tested positive out of 60,606 residents who have been tested, which is roughly one-third of those tested have been found to be positive. Here in the town of Newcastle, as of today, there are 86 COVID-19 positive cases, although we fully recognize that this actually under represents the number of positive cases in our town since many residents who were in good health and only exhibited mild symptoms were told to self-quarantine. Sadly, today we have lost 596 Westchester County residents to this disease, and we know that this number is likely to continue to rise in the coming days. However, there is some positive news. With each passing day, it appears more likely that we are flattening the curve. And whether we have in fact flattened the curve or if this is simply a plateau that we're on right now, it remains to be seen. But we are hopeful. In Newcastle, we can take some measure of pride in the fact that we have one of the lowest number of positive cases in terms of a percentage as compared to the total population in town. Point four five percent of our total population has tested positive for COVID-19. And I recognize that this is correlated with both the population density as well as the median household income in our municipality versus others in Westchester. Um and that the numbers countywide do tell a story about racial and economic inequality. All of that said, I think that we can take some measure of pride in the fact that our aggressive social distancing measures and our early action on the part of this municipality has kept those numbers reasonably low. But continuing to flatten the curve relies on all of our residents to stay home, to continue to practice social distancing, and not to become complacent or nonchalant. When you start to hear that the curve is flattening, that does not mean that your life should go back to normal. We must continue to social distance in order to continue to see the changes that we're hopeful that we're seeing. So we can do this and we are all in it together. Couple of other announcements related to coronavirus. Um on Sunday, Governor Cuomo issued executive order 202 dot 16, which states that for all essential businesses or entities, any employees who are present in the workplace shall wear face coverings when in direct contact with customers or members of the public, and that businesses must provide at their own expense such face coverings for their employees. This is enforceable by local law enforcement under the public health law, and this takes effect on Wednesday, April 15th at 8:00 PM. If you know of an essential business that is not in compliance, please reach out to our police desk at 238-4422, and we will follow up to ensure compliance with this. We have also locally extended our local state of emergency pursuant to New York State Executive Law. On March 17th of this year, I issued a proclamation of local state emergence of emergency to protect life and health and to control the emergency situation here in town. That will be extended for an additional 30 days and will terminate on May 14th unless sooner rescinded or extended. Property taxes. So as you likely know, county and local tax bills were mailed to residents on April 1st. The deadline to pay your taxes is April 30th. This week, the Westchester County Board of Legislators is currently considering legislation to greatly reduce penalties for late payment to provide relief to all residents and to those that have suffered economic hardship due to COVID-19. The town of Newcastle has and will continue to advocate for residents, and we support the county board of legislators proposal. We will communicate with you when the final details are known. However, we continue to ask all residents, if you can pay on time, please do so. Our local budget and the services that we provide depend on these revenues. And unlike the federal and state income taxes, um we all know that those filing dates were delayed until July 15th. Those taxes are typically withheld throughout the year and are in fact even sometimes refunded as a result of the annual filing. The local and county taxes which are collected this month through this annual process are essential to being able to conduct our business. We expect the results of the county board of legislators deliberations on Friday, April 17th. Uh and to learn more about this, I encourage you to visit the county board of legislators website, which is westchesterlegislators.com. Uh the last bit of news about uh COVID-19. The town right now is in the process of creating an online resource guide for residents, which will compile all of the guidance that we provided from our previous Eve newsletters and provide important links to state and county resources as well. A link to this guide will come out in our newsletter tomorrow, so please stay tuned. One other important update from me. Con Edison and post-storm power restoration. Unfortunately, due to the high winds that we experienced in the storm yesterday, those customers who lost power yesterday were unable to be restored in a timely way, and this was due to the fact that workers could not go up in the buckets to complete the restoration jobs due to the the high winds. Con Ed visited outage sites. They were able to assess damages, and they prioritized road closures and public safety issues. The number of outages has been continuing to go down during the day-to-day. We do have a dedicated Con Ed municipal liaison who is working with our town and with the town administrator Jill Shapiro, and I know she'll give a further update um on the current status of the restoration of power. Um and so before I move on to uh the administrators' report, I just wanted to pause here and see if any of my fellow town board members wanted to give an update based on any of the work that they've been doing this past week. Anyway, okay, thanks. All right, Jill, I'll kick it over to you then for the administrators' report.
To have some, I was hoping to have some better news. I was hoping to be able to say that, you know, we were 100% restored by Con Ed. Unfortunately, I can't tell you that. I know that my frustration doesn't begin to reach the frustration of those people that are still sitting in the dark, and so that I am profoundly sorry. The only silver lining I can tell you is that due to the perseverance of the town board in their communications with Con Ed, our four remaining roads that were closed all have crews actively working on them. Um and along with a promise from Con Ed, take that for what it is, um that they will be opened this evening. They are, they have assured me that they are investigating what the delay was and why tickets on these roads that were supposed to be top priority were reflected as closed when in fact they were not, and that clearly slowed the response. Clearly unacceptable. They promised me they'll do better. I just want the lights back on, and I know everybody else does too, and we're working on it. I'm expecting a um update. As we speak, I was hoping to get it by 7:30. I'm checking my phone, so not being rude, but I I I hear something, I will certainly let you guys know. I just did want to, um I printed out this report so small that I I can't read it. I just want to let people know that our town's essential operations continue uninterrupted. Um our police continue to patrol. Our water quality testing continues daily as required by the Department of Health, and our Meals on Wheels program continues to serve our seniors. We have staff onsite daily, although compliance with the governor's executive orders has reduced the number of staff physically in the building. Wherever possible, staff is working remotely to reduce the chance of infection. And for those staff who are in town hall and the DPW and Parks buildings, everyone has masks, and they should be wearing them. We have employees who drive alone to work sites, even though they may be working together, and town hall staff who do not who actually do report to work are directed to stay in their respective departments and not to socialize. We are doing our part to keep our staff hey, so help, sorry, our staff healthy and working for our community. We actually have a a number of uh construction projects for the future that we are continuing to plan for that are essential in nature, and one involves the issuance of a bid document that we hope to have in the next several weeks, and that's for a roof replacement at the community center. Last year, uh as the board is aware, the roof failed in a heavy rainstorm and resulted in significant water damage to the building. Although we were able to make emergency repairs, we're aware that this is a temporary fix and that the roof, if the roof is not repaired, significant structural damage will result going forward. However, the public should be comforted to know that our non-essential construction and maintenance projects have been put on hold. The basketball court and playground construction has been paused, and the scheduled replacement of the light bulbs, the lights at the rec field have been canceled for now. This too will be rescheduled after the governor allows these activities to resume. Um and last but not least, um well, actually, two things. We have a bid opening on April 17th for a turbine engine, and the bidders were all notified that the bid will be opened live via Zoom. Uh and the Zoom link was provided to them, so we're very excited to see how our new technology works. And uh we did get approval for the installation of songs and signs along 117, that's strong enough glasses, indicating that the indicating the Chappaqua Performing Arts Center is located. So we actually got the turn sign. And uh so they'll be along 117 and Roaring Brook Road. That's it for me. Thanks.
Thanks, Jill. And I actually just noticed that um on the agenda for tonight, we have um a line for the controllers' report, but we of course don't actually have our controller, Rob Derry, on the line. I assume that that was a holdover from a previous.
Was a holdover from last time. Sorry about that.
Okay, yeah.
And I just noticed it myself, and Rob's like, uh, next time. Absolutely.
Okay, so in that case, the next thing that's on our agenda this evening is public comment and new business. Um and so I will pause here and see whether we have any public comments.
If people are uh would like to speak, they can raise their hand or their virtual hand or type in on the chat box, and we'll have the board call on you. Hold on one moment. Okay.
So we have Victoria Elzepidi.
Yes, great. I don't know if you can see me, but.
We can't see you. We can hear you.
Okay, okay, great. So hi, everyone. I hope you are all doing as well as possible uh in light of everything going on, and thank you, Ivy, for suggesting that folks who were concerned about the possibility of the town of Newcastle implementing an emergency temporary leaf blower ban uh for those of us to come tonight to speak during public comment. So thanks for that offer, and thanks to all of you, many thanks to all of you town board members and town staff as well for everything you've been doing during this COVID-19 crisis to support our town and protect our residents. We, I think I can speak on behalf of everyone, are very, very grateful for all your energy and your time and commitment. So um I wanted to just upfront really stress that sincerely. So thank you. And my concern tonight, I guess I'm going to really just start with a personal story. I have a loved one in Manhattan who we think does have uh COVID-19. She has not been tested, but she has all the symptoms. And um a lot of the last two plus weeks of my life have been spending time connecting with her by text, uh checking in on her every single day. She's in kind of a an hour-to-hour struggle with this illness, and every day I've been kind of tuning into what her symptoms are, working with her to figure out whether she should go to the hospital, finding a blood oxygen meter that she can use on her finger to determine how her oxygen levels are and whether she should call an ambulance. So I've been very, um as many of us, I'm sure, have been tied in directly with someone who is struggling with this virus. And so kind of a parallel track to that over these past couple of weeks has been the beginning of a leaf blower season here in Newcastle. And um ever since the leaf blowers have come out again, I know as someone with asthma, um I this has been the case for me since I moved to Newcastle more than 10 years ago. When the leaf blowers start, I need to make sure my windows are closed, and I need to make sure that I don't go outside for a few hours after I hear the leaf blowers because I know that I'm very likely to get an asthma attack. Um and that's happened. And that's happened multiple times that I've had asthma prompted by leaf blower emission, the particulate matter in the air, and, you know, pesticides which are mucked up by the leaf blowers as well. So it's been really tricky during this COVID-19 crisis where this virus specifically targets, as we all know, the pulmonary system and the lungs. And I'm sure we've all been watching Governor Cuomo's press conferences talking about the need for ventilators. And we know that when this illness strikes hard, it hits our lungs. And I think, you know, in my, my loved one situation where that person does not have asthma, but is kind of inflicted with the day-to-day breathing issues, anyone who, you know, even who doesn't have COVID-19 locally here, anywhere throughout Westchester and our town and beyond, who has asthma is really working hard to make sure that their lungs are as strong as they can be. So that if, you know, God forbid, they do come down with a virus, they're as strong as they can be to fend it off. And that goes for asthmatics, people with COPD, people with pre-existing conditions in general. You know, I think a lot of folks are focusing on their own immune systems, even if they don't have those illnesses or those precondition, pre-existing conditions, really trying to be, you know, top shape so that they can fend it off if it, if it, you know, if they do get COVID-19. And having times where you can't even go into your own backyard or open your window because of leaf blower emission, which really happens every single day in our town. I know for my area, you know, I often can't tell whose leaf blower it is, but in kind of the extended community, Wednesdays are a really bad day. I typically can't really go into my backyard on Wednesdays because there's so much leaf blower refuse. And I think, you know, various different parts of our town have different days that maybe there's a heavy use, usage. At any rate, even for those folks who don't, you know, who don't have a pre-existing condition or maybe those folks who actually have COVID-19, those folks, for all we know, are in their own homes similar to my loved one in the city, struggling to breathe and, you know, clearly a good place for them to be might be outside getting some vitamin D, some sun. If they have leaf blowers around, they're not going to be able to do that because it's just going to irritate their lungs more and same with keeping their windows open. So, so it has struck me kind of watching the other towns, some of the other municipalities in Westchester. I think the main, the first one that really kicked off an announcement over a week ago, I guess, was Sleepy Hollow. Once I saw that a town kind of formally came out with, you know, the support of a leaf blower ban temporarily to support the public health, I kind of thought, oh, great, you know, here's the first formal announcement, and hopefully other towns will follow, including ours. And one by one, other towns did come out. Crotan on Hudson, Tarrytown, Larchmont, Mamaroneck. And, you know, you may have seen my comments online of wanting to keep our neighbors and residents, fellow community members posted on which other towns were putting this into effect. And, you know, I guess I see our town board as a town board that is concerned about the health of our community. And also our town board had, and I know this doesn't speak to everyone on the town board because a couple of you are new, but for Ivy and Jeremy and Lisa, they've been through the SAB's presentations last year, including a lot of medical evidence. A doctor came to speak to the town board about the dangers to the lungs, the pulmonary system that leaf blowers pose, leaf blower emissions pose, a lot of studies, et cetera. And so I know we have that background. And it's, I'm just honestly, I have to be honest, you know, I think you're all doing a great job, but I have been confused frankly and a little bit disappointed at why this was not something that you would quickly implement a temporary. Again, it is temporary during this COVID crisis when our lungs are so at risk, whether we do or don't have the illness, whether we're trying to prevent it, recovering from it, or have pre-existing lung conditions. It just seems that it's one of the few things that's in the control of this board to make that decision. I think there's been some focus on the density of towns. I can tell you right now, I have an acre, my property is just a teeny bit under an acre. And absolutely, I'm affected by leaf blower emissions from my immediate neighbors and from beyond that, even when it's down the road, because the wind carries, the air, you know, carries over. So, you know, I really just wanted to talk with you tonight because I want to strongly encourage you sooner than later to put this in effect to protect our community. You know, I think whatever, whatever negatives people can think of, the benefits, the health benefits for adults and children alike in our community, for seniors, for everyone in our town. This is some action that we can absolutely take. The county does not have responsibility. Initially thought maybe the county had some responsibility and was told by George Latimer that it's up to the municipalities. So, so that is my, my plea to you tonight. Happy to answer any questions, but please, please seriously consider this. And if there's any additional information I can give you in addition to what the SAB has already provided, please let me know. Thank you.
Thank you, Victoria, that was very well said. I do want to respond to that, but before I, and I assume that other town board members do as well. But before I do, you mentioned that there might be others who were interested in providing public comment on this topic. So just before I respond to Victoria, rather than sort of responding to this issue person by person, is there anybody else who came this evening, who logged on this evening, who wanted to provide a public comments with regard to leaf blowers?
I don't see anybody else raising their hand.
I guess I'm the only one. I know, you know, often I wind up being the only one to.
I don't mean to suggest that it's not an issue because you're the only person speaking on it. I just, you know, like I said, I just wanted to. And sometimes it takes a little while for people to figure out how to raise their hand or how to comment, so.
And I don't know if anyone has submitted by email, but, you know, at least I wanted to communicate my, my feelings about it.
Okay, we do have Karen Bazik raising her hand, so hold on one moment. Karen, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, okay, I'm not very good at this. Yeah, I wanted to agree with Victoria about what she's saying about the emissions. And I've noticed, because I've been watching, I have some new neighbors, that the length of time for these leaf blowers, it's very long. Like, it seems like it can go on for an hour or more. Now, you know, many of us are home, and I wonder what kind of damage it does. And I'm trying to figure out even why, because I was watching the leaf blowers, what they were doing. And it didn't seem like, I don't know, it seemed like it took a very, very long time. And I'm not really sure what the purpose of it was, because there weren't any leaves on the person's lawn. So it seems like kind of a health risk that isn't really necessary. I mean, I understand if they're clearing a pathway, or I know that there are other reasons, but it just seemed like too long and too dangerous with the health concerns.
Thank you, Karen. Anybody else who wanted to offer a comment about leaf blowers? I see Rand, Rand, are you here to, to comment or to listen?
I think I'm on, I raised my hand, can you hear me?
We can hear you, thanks, Rand.
So I'll make a comment, as you know, or some of you know, I am a member of the SAB. I'm not speaking officially for them. I will give some insight to information that I ascertained in my studies as part of the SAB. And, you know, the point matter that I think Victoria was trying to raise, or did raise very elegantly, is that when you use leaf blowers, it does raise particulate matter. We don't know enough about the virus to know whether that is of concern for, for COVID-19. But studies that were done in the past showed that viruses and do create particulate matter that can be raised and blown around. And if the virus is on the ground and, and does get blown around, it does go airborne, it can enter your lungs and cause problems like that. There is no, obviously, there's no data that can be shown because the virus is way too new. But, so the unknown is here, and the unknown of the virus being blown and being inhaled is there. So the unknown is what I'm concerned about with leaf blowers being used at this time of year. And, you know, I will not go out because, I mean, if I do, I'm going to be wearing a mask. It's just one more thing that I think we do need to be cautious of. And I would advise the town to ban them as three other towns in Westchester have already. I do understand that it is an added burden for residents, you know, not being able to clean their properties and the extra cost that might be borne by having to have it wait to something like that in a time where people are trying to conserve their costs. But I think the health risk is greater than the actual cost. It's my personal opinion.
Thanks, Rand, and thanks for your leadership on this issue.
Thank you. You're all doing a great job, by the way.
Anyone else who's here to speak about leaf blowers? Okay, so, so if not, I'll, I'll sort of rewind and respond sort of in, in order to the, the things that we heard. So first, I, I did just want to speak to everybody and let them know that the town has been looking into this issue. And first, I just wanted to say that because the state has declared a state of emergency, any executive order that I, as the town supervisor, would issue on the matter of leaf blowers, we have been told by our town attorneys would require New York State Department of Health approval. Unless it were strictly limited to the use of leaf blowers by town employees or leaf blowers on municipal properties. Once that.
Because you went out, I didn't hear you.
Oh, sorry, where did you, where did you lose me at?
You were speaking to council and then I lost you.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I, so what I, I'll rewind. What I said is that in speaking to council, we have been advised that if I were as the town supervisor to issue an executive order on the matter of leaf blowers, it would require approval from the New York State Department of Health, unless the executive order were strictly limited to the use of leaf blowers by town employees or on municipal properties. And if DOH were to approve such an executive order, it would in fact only be valid for five days and would require reissuance every five days after that. So on the one hand, that's only an administrative issue, so just having to reissue that ban every five days. But we also think there's real reason to believe that New York State DOH would not necessarily approve such an executive order. So I have been in contact with the governor's office on this matter, and I inquired as to whether New York State was going to be taking a position on leaf blower use as it relates to and during this crisis. And what I was advised by the governor's office is that the state does not intend to attempt to restrict the use of leaf blowers at this time. So we have asked for them to consider issuing some public health guidance on this topic so that towns and villages can take a consistent approach. One of the things that we've really been trying to do across municipalities right now is to take this kind of a consistent approach, and we've been all kind of working together to, to have that, that kind of consistency. Okay, so that said, you've obviously pointed out that there are some municipalities, villages, not towns, but villages that have issued bans on leaf blowers due to the COVID-19 crisis. Those villages, for the most part, what they have done is they have suspended their own existing local leaf blower ordinances, which we think does not require DOH state approval in order to do that. I don't actually want to opine on the legality of what other municipalities have done, but the guidance, again, that we've received from our town attorneys is that because Newcastle does not have our own existing leaf blower law, we would need New York State DOH approval in order to issue an executive order. You know, I know that there's a lot of enthusiasm around this topic. There has been some misinformation out there, as I mentioned. It's villages, not towns. Originally, there were some claims that were made that Bedford and Pound Ridge had instituted leaf blower bans. I've been in contact, I'm in contact daily with their town supervisors. Neither of them have issued bans, and they have no intention of doing so. And as I mentioned, we are very much trying to, especially within the sort of northern Westchester supervisors group, we're, we're trying to be a little bit consistent in terms of our approach to how we're dealing with this across municipalities, not just on this issue, but on a wide variety of issues. So I guess the only other thing I would say on this is, you know, it's well-known, I think, in this community that I am a proponent of passing leaf blower legislation. But that said, in my view, issuing an executive order on leaf blowers at this time is, I think, an executive overreach. And I'm afraid that doing so would hurt our chances of passing leaf blower legislation by undermining my credibility, as well as the credibility, Rand, of the work that you've done on behalf of our SAB. I, you know, and I'm speaking only for myself here, but I really strongly prefer to use our normal legislative process in order to, to advance our leaf blower legislation. And in fact, Rand, I don't know whether this has reached you yet or not, but we have invited our SAB to attend our next town board work session, which is next week, it's April 21st, and to reintroduce the leaf blower legislation at that time. So it's not as though I don't want to continue our good work on this, but I, I wanted, there's, you know, I want to do the, the right thing in the right way, not do the right thing in, in the wrong way. And I'm afraid that trying to do this by executive order at this time, both because of the hurdles that we would have to clear with the state, as well as not wanting to circumvent the normal legislative process that we have in place, I think would be the wrong way. And then the, lastly, you know, I, I think that we can all be good neighbors. And so I don't discredit anything that, Victoria, you said with regard to your family member who's suffering, and I, I, I am very sorry to hear that. And, you know, I think there's a way that we can approach this as a community that's about being good neighbors and being good to each other. And so, you know, you, you can, and I encourage you to reach out to your landscapers to make them aware that, you know, the essential businesses and landscaping is deemed to be an essential business, but those essential businesses must still follow social distancing guidelines. They must still be six feet apart at all times. And so what this essentially boils down to is having one worker per truck. You can also, just on an individual level, talk to your landscaper about not using leaf blowers on your property. I did that, I spoke to my landscaper, he's, he's a great guy. And I said, listen, I, you know, I don't want you to use leaf blowers at this time. And, and he was on board, and he, but he did say to me that it's one thing to do that on my property, which is, I, I have an acre, but my house is, it's mostly woods, and I just have a very small yard. It's one thing to do that on, on a property of my size. It's different when you start looking at larger properties, particularly given that it's spring cleanup season. And with the storms yesterday that have blown through, I know that there's cleanup related to that too. So, you know, that said, I would encourage everybody, if you can, to talk to, to your landscapers about voluntarily limiting their use of leaf blowers, which, you know, not only addresses the, the sort of public health issues, but it's also a good way to just honor the fact that many of us are working from home right now. So I've spoken for a really long time. And I know that other town board members likely have opinions on this as, as well.
Can I just interject very quickly?
Sure.
We have invited SAB to attend our next meeting. We have not gotten confirmation from them yet as to whether or not they're ready for the presentation. So I didn't want people to get the impression that they're coming next week, you know, and it said, it's, it's not yet, so we're just waiting for a response.
Anybody else want to weigh in? Jeremy, I think you took yourself off mute.
Yeah, I'll jump in very briefly, I think you were, you know, spoke very well and hit the major points. I do want to just follow up on a couple of things. Number one, pardon me as I looked out on my phone because I was typing some things, so I didn't forget. I, I think Victoria pointed out, and correctly so, the county is not setting a standard or creating a law that says, or a ban that says, we can or can't do X. But it's worthy to note that even though County Executive Latimer is saying the villages or the towns and the cities can make their own determination at the. at the same time, neither, neither he or the Westchester County Department of Health are saying, while you can make it, we are suggesting, and here are our guidelines, that you should do this for the following reasons. And in fact, they've said, I want to say the opposite. Ivy's spoken with the county, Ivy's spoken with the state, neither one of those entities have said you should ban leaf blowers. And I'm hesitant to do that right now. Uh, and to Rand's point about the economics of it, I, I think that's, your assessment is somewhat correct, Rand, meaning that, yes, there are folks who might have to pay a little bit more to have their leaves raked as, or a lot more, whatever it may be, as opposed to the landscaper blowing. But there's also plenty of people right now who don't have a landscaper, or for that matter, they have had one before and they're on a large lot, but they're not going to have one now because they're not making, they're not earning an income, whatever it may be, or greatly reduced. So they're doing it themselves. And if you're on a big piece of property, especially there's issues with the stuff right up on your house and you want to clean it up, you should have the right to do so. So I, I, I don't support a ban now. And I would leave with one other piece. Yes, it's villages. I think density is a very important issue. We do have some density in our hamlets, this is true. But not to the numbers, for the most part, that we saw, um, in these villages, up to 5,000 plus people per square mile. And you're talking one, two, three, maybe up to five, uh, square mile municipalities, as opposed to our municipality, which is 24, pardon me, 24 roughly square miles. So all that being said, I, like Ivy, was a, am a proponent of, of legislation to limit gas lease, let gas leaf blower use. My immediate concern is just economics right now and financial right now. You know, but that will cross that bridge. But in terms of a ban, I, I, I don't support it, assuming that council said that we could either vote on it as a, as a body, or Ivy could do so in an executive order.
Hey, so this is Jason. So to tack on to that, right, Ivy's points about me, and I'm kind of looking down at my handwritten notes, you know, to, about being a good neighbor, you know, and so I did reach out to my landscaper. And I, they, they wanted to do our spring cleanup and I told them not to come. And this is my telling them not to come, and I'm going to make sure they're taken care of in other ways. But they are a small business, just like many, just like many others. And I want to be able to support small businesses. And this is not, while, for, as a state, this was deemed, uh, an essential piece of work. For me personally, I don't find it to be an essential piece of work to be done on my property. So I've told my own landscaper not to come. Again, I will take care of them in other ways. I do agree, again, it, it's nice going, you know, near the last. I do agree with Ivy's point on it should be a, a normal legislative process to do the right thing in the right way.
Thanks. So not everybody has to speak, but Lisa or Lauren, do either of you want to weigh in? This is awkward to do over Zoom. It's hard to tell.
I, I mean, I don't, I, I think all three of you were all on the same page on this. So, uh, same thing with me, with our, our landscapers, we've asked them not to use leaf, gas leaf blowers. We're very fortunate because we don't live on a large property, but we do live on a street that is quite dense. And, you know, Ivy, I think the idea of a, a good neighbor campaign or something that we can do would be really, would be totally possible. So I'm happy to help in that endeavor, if that is something that we want to pursue, um, this week.
I think that's a great idea. Lisa, you're off of mute.
No, I mean, I initially thought, uh, I actually was in favor of a short-term ban on this, but, you know, the fact that we councils told us we need Department of Health approval, I just think it's going to be a pretty cumbersome process to even get that done, that the wiser thing to do is to try to just, again, adopt a good neighbor policy and get people to voluntarily stop doing it, because I think that it's, it's really going to be difficult to actually get, get a ban through, even though I think the concept behind it and the reasons behind it are actually very good.
So, um, I see that, Victoria, you have your hand raised again. Do we have you with us?
Yes, could I just make just some brief reaction comments, please? Uh, so it's good to hear all of your perspectives on this and, I appreciate very much those of you who have, um, proactively asked your own landscapers to not, uh, do leaf blowing. So grateful for that. Um, and definitely appreciate this concept of doing a, uh, be a friendly, good neighbor. Uh, I think that's great. And, you know, that said, I, you know, I just want to speak to, number one, the question of landscapers and the financial aspect. You know, interestingly, this is a springtime situation, springtime crisis, as opposed to a fall time crisis. Uh, in the fall is the time, I remember hearing all the, you know, the feedback from, uh, when the SAP did the presentations. Fall is really hard time, uh, to restrict leaf blowers because of all the leaves. If there ever was a good time, if there was, you know, no such thing as a good time to have this horrific crisis that we're dealing with. But leaves are not that much of an issue right now as they would be in other seasons. And, you know, people who have, you know, twigs on their landscape, et cetera, the landscapers can be paid to do other work. I certainly wouldn't want to take any money out of the hands of those folks. They desperately need money right now. There are so many other things that they can be doing on our properties, other than leaf blow, picking up the twigs, uh, from the storm, taking out invasive plants. I mean, there are a lot of other activities that they could be doing. And I feel very strongly, especially, and I hate to point to my, uh, New York City loved one, but I cannot imagine her having to pick up the phone if she lived in our town and having to call her landscaper or her neighbors, uh, not her landscaper, but her neighbors, to say, would you please not use a leaf blower? I mean, that puts, it's a nice thought in, in theory, and we all want to be good communicators with our neighbors. But when you're sick, that's really not, I think, uh, not really a good thing to be asking someone who's sick or trying to recover, uh, to have that burden on them. And I, I feel strongly that public officials right now, uh, all of you actually have the power to not put the burden on individual people, but to take this action yourself. And I thought it was interesting, I was not aware of this, um, distinction of municipalities that already have a leaf ban in place. I have not correlated whether the ones doing the temporary ban already have a leaf blower, um, ban or legislation in place, but I have noticed, if you've looked at some of the executive orders, emergency orders, a few of those, or at least a couple, do mention that they expire, I believe, like four or five days later. So, um, I believe that was you, Ivy, who mentioned that you would have to kind of go back, even if the public, the Department of Public Health did approve. Uh, so maybe some of those folks had to go through that same process and are, um, updating that, you know, every so often, the, that legislation, the emergency legislation. So just wanted to put that out there to, to look at whether all of those towns actually do have an existing ban. And, you know, the final other thing I'd say is that timing is not always everything, it doesn't present itself perfectly. So I totally hear what you're saying, Ivy, in terms of wanting to do the regular legislative process. And I, ideally, I think that makes huge amount of sense. And wanting for us all as a community to be in favor of something and find the perfect balance and get folks on board. But this crisis has presented itself when it has presented itself. And it doesn't necessarily line up with our ideal goals or timing, but it is what it is. And one of the main reasons we would think of banning gas leaf blowers is for health reasons. And here we now suddenly have this very time sensitive, we're literally living it in the moment, public health crisis that affects our lungs. So if ever there was a time to do something that we didn't plan to do, not in the perfect sequence, I think now is one of those times. And I would ask you as well, if there's anything else that I can get for you, any information, anything that would be compelling, to encourage you to keep this, you know, on your radar and think about whether you might want to do the ban on a temporary basis, uh, please let me know. I'm happy to, uh, get any information that you think would be useful. Thank you.
Thank you, Victoria, and thank you for your advocacy and attention to this issue, which has been over a long period of time. So thank you so much. And I would encourage you to, to come back next weekend and to participate in the, in the conversation that we, we have with the SAP as well. Thanks. Jill, before we move on to the next item on the agenda, did you want to do an update based on the text messages you've been sent?
I don't believe. I'm afraid it gives credence.
Okay.
You know, I'm concerned.
So, so, so for transparency's sake, the, the messages we've been sharing back and forth are, are with regard to, to ConEd and, and hopefulness that we are, um, approaching a smaller number of outages this evening. We are still operating under the guidance that ConEd had provided, that 95% of customers would be restored by 11:00 PM this evening. It looks like we will approach 95%, but likely not have the entire town restored, um, by 11:00 PM this evening. So hitting that mark, um, but unfortunately, um, leaving some folks in the, the dark.
So we will be following up tomorrow, um, but people should know that Overlook remains closed because it requires an environmental cleanup. And those, so those crews will be working through the night, but, um, there will be residents on Overlook that are not restored because they can't finish the environmental cleanup. So again, so sorry, even our, I haven't got apologies from my liaison, but I don't have lights for you guys. So I'm terribly sorry. We're working on it. We will be checking in first thing tomorrow.
Thanks, Joe.
Ivy, before you go on, uh, I don't know if there's other public comments.
Oh, thank you for, for mentioning that, because I had asked for the ones related to, uh, to leaf blowers. Thank you for, for reminding me. Do we have any other public comments from anyone who's on Zoom or, or YouTube or anyone who, uh, sent anything over, Christina, to our town clerk?
Um, I just have the ones that we talked about. Oh, I'm having an echo here, um, that we, from earlier with the, um, proposed local laws. And I think the board was all copied on those. That was all I've received.
Great.
And there's nothing else on YouTube at the moment or on our attendees list?
Okay. We'll just pause for a second if anybody wants to raise their hand. Okay. So we'll move on, um, you know, but I know that technology is hard. So if, if you didn't get a chance to speak and you, you wanted to, just raise your hand or, or make a comment in the Zoom chat, we can circle back to people. You don't have to be quite so formal in this new informal world we're in. Where are my slippers? So the next thing that we wanted to do, Jeremy, do you want to discuss the, uh, social distancing poster contest?
Oh, yes, 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 yes. We had, I think, 18 responses, which is pretty terrific, 17 or 18 responses, which is pretty terrific. I'd like to say everyone won, so I will say one won. But we did say that we pick out winners from each age bracket, but that's a relative term because everything was terrific. Everyone gets the, the proverbial gold medal. We can't give you gold. We would have, but for budget cuts. Let me pull it up. I have to look onto my Word document for a second. So we received from Arav Janji, Anushka Pradhan, Naomi Olivera, Miles Shapiro. Um, and let me, the first three were in kindergarten, Miles Shapiro, uh, Sienna Cakes, Alessandra Dinefrio in second grade, the three of them. Bree Napoli, Melina Santi, Arjun Johnny, and Rory and Jordan Fink. The, the last three were in the fourth grade and the first was in the third grade. And then a good showing from fifth, sixth, eighth through 10th as well. Juliana Dinefrio, Lila Skolnick, Maya Harrell, Zoya Nabil, Audrey Johnson, Meredith Finer, and Emma Zoo. So they were all really, really terrific. Everyone did a terrific job. But we did, uh, pick out three and we're going to figure out how to have all three of these, uh, displayed in different parts of town. Arun Janji in grade four, Emma Zoo, uh, in grade 10, and a little out of order, and Maya Harrell in grade five. They were really, really terrific, all of them. I think Lyle, if you weren't doing it, I apologize. Oh, you are terrific. I was looking away. You're running through them. So I want to thank everyone. They really, really are great. These are, these are, you know, the fact that everyone got involved and took the time to do this, uh, is a testament to our community. So thank you so very much. All thumbs up.
Thanks, Jeremy. And maybe what we can do is we can display a, a different one of these as our, um, sort of homepage on our, our Facebook site over the course of the next several days.
That would, that would be great. Whatever we can do, it would be terrific. So that's-
Yeah.
Good idea.
That would be fun. All right. Thanks, everybody, for participating. Um, and thanks to our rec department, um, in Town Hall. They have been really awesome during this, this entire, um, crisis that we're, we're all going through. If folks are not following the Newcastle Recreation and Parks Facebook page, I really recommend that you get on there, um, and follow them. They've been doing amazing daily online activities for kids. They've been getting over 500 views, uh, per activity, and they've been really a lot of fun. Um, and they helped to put this contest together and, uh, collected all of these submissions. And they're just doing a really great job of, of kind of keeping our spirits up, um, and sharing some good news during this difficult time. So I'm now trying to figure out how to get out of my, all right. Technology, isn't it great? Um, all right. So do we have any other comments before we move forward?
Only that we are holding number five on the resolutions.
Okay. So then in that case, are we ready to move forward with the other resolutions?
Holding number five or holding number four? Or maybe I've got a wrong version here.
Four, yeah.
For the resolution with respect to vehicle-
That's my number five, so I must have an earlier version.
Yeah.
Well, we're also, we're also holding five. Five is about the, the fee schedule for rec.
I thought it was five and seven we're holding off on, right?
Yeah.
I definitely am not using, seeing-
Five and seven.
Auctions, which I thought we were doing.
Yeah, do it five and seven.
Yeah, five and seven, yeah.
Well, it was right.
Okay. Five and seven, got it.
One, do we have, I'm sorry, do we, it was a new one that was forwarded separately, correct?
There were two versions of the, the work session packet. It's the later one that Christina sent down.
But Christina, the, the resolution's changed?
No, just payments and claims is empty on this one I'm looking at.
Have it. I can read it if you guys want me to start.
Oh, Lauren, you're a star. You're going first.
Two.
All right. I move to approve the payment of claims in the amount of $526,170.38 listed on the summary pre-check writing report and detail voucher detail report each prepared on April 14, 2020. Checks will be issued and mailed to each claimant listed on Wednesday, April 15, 2020.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
I move to accept the following monthly reports from March 2020, Town Clerk, Court Clerk, Development Department, and Receiver of Taxes.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi. I move to adopt the following sets of town board minutes, March 24th, 2020, Town Board Meeting, and March 31st, 2020, uh, Work Session.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
I move to authorize the town of Newcastle Department of Public Works Center into a two-year agreement, uh, with Auctions International Incorporated for the sale of surplus government assets.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
I move to set a public hearing on a local law concerning construction of retaining walls to be held May 12th, 2020, Newcastle Town Hall. At 7:00 PM, and to refer the local law to the county and town planning boards for a report and recommendation.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Hi.
Uh, I move to set a public hearing on a local law to regulate eaves projecting into yards to be held on May 12th, 2020, at Newcastle Town Hall at 7:00 PM, and to refer the local law to the county and town planning boards for a report and recommendation.
Second. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
That it?
Is that it? Yeah, was that it?
That's it.
I think that's it.
Jason, want to move us to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
All right, second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi.